Good afternoon. It's Thursday, March the 27th. And I call this meeting of the Monterey Public Library Board of Library Trustees to order. Do we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Library Trustee Eddie.
Here.
Library Trustee Mauro.
Here.
Vice Chair DeLamier.
Here.
And Chair Soler.
Here.
All right, we have a short but intense agenda. Starting with the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Which consists of approval of minutes and authorizing the library and the Sims directive to sign letters on behalf of the city.
Yeah, I asked a quick question about item two without having to pull it.
Okay.
I feel in addition to authorizing the executive director to sign letters, I'm not sure the city would say you as an employee can sign on behalf of the whole city, unless you're the mayor or something. And I would just check that because otherwise, you know, I mean, you have a high position, but on behalf of the city, no, on behalf of the library, yeah. And I'm more than happy to give you that leeway. But I also think that if a letter of that nature goes out, the chair of the board should sign it.
Yes, I think that just to follow up with that, that was something that I think the initial thought is they could either be the, and we could make it either the board chair or library director and or co. So I think if we want to put on there to authorize the board chair and library director to sign together, I think we could do that as well.
Yeah, and I just, it struck me funny that we would say, hey, sure, go ahead and sign on behalf of the city. Unless you're the mayor, so I don't know if that's a something that our city attorney would go, hmm, what's he signing on behalf of the city for?
Yeah, I checked with the city.
Oh, good.
I checked with the city of the process and was given a draft of a recent letter that was not sent to the federal government, was sent to another local government agency.
On behalf of the city.
On behalf of the city, and it was regarding, I think, a transportation kind of an issue.
But it was a relevant staff person rather than the mayor.
It was relevant or the mayor, I believe.
Yeah.
It was given the direction that I was given is that the board could authorize the director or the chair. And so I think if the, if the, if the board, we could work with, I assume Chair Soler, I was heading out of town pretty soon, so that's where I was thinking.
Well, that's why we have a vice chair, she should sign in the chair's address.
But if we want to have that, I think that's fine for us to work on that together and then send that out next week.
So you're gonna say board and chair or board chair?
You mean board director or chair?
Director or chair?
I would say and chair.
And or chair.
No, I would say we're both.
And chair.
And in lieu of the chair, if she's unavailable, then the vice chair. I mean, that's true. I just think it would feel more meaningful to the recipient in whatever case this is taking place.
Okay.
With that change added, I would look, we accept the consent agenda.
All right, I'll second your consent. Any comments from the public?
Information, I do want to just share for information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment is available on this meeting's agenda, which is online at isearchmontery.org. We look forward to receiving your public comments. You will have three minutes to speak. And if anyone would like to provide public comment, we invite you to raise your hand. And there are no public comments at this time.
All right, do we have a roll call?
No. Just as long as everybody approves.
Okay, we will move on to regular public comment. If there is anyone who wishes to comment.
Is there anyone online that would wish to make a public comment? There is nobody at this time raising their hand.
So on to the main event, which is to approve, well, to create and approve a Board of Library Trustees recommendation on library capital improvement. Brian is going to leave.
Sure. So over, thank you, Chair Soler. So going back into our packet, as you'll see. The, it was a prior report from Group Four Research Architecture Research Plan, which went to the Board of Library Trustees in 2020 and presented to Monterey City Council October 2020. With that proposal, there was a different project scope from level one to level four, ranging from $12 million for level one for facility needs here at the library, up to level four at $42 million. And the choice at that time was the level three, which was a $36,389,000 project. So with that, just going back to kind of some of our past discussions we've had over here with Board of Library Trustees about what is feasible for the next few years here in the library. And with that, in 2007, going back to that, there was a facility condition analysis report. There was $3.5 million identified in capital needs. But between 2007 and 2020, there was $982,000 invested in the library. Some of those items were part of the facility condition analysis report. So those were things like roof replacements. But other items like the quiet study room expansion and kitchen addition were not part of that. I have a kitchen addition somewhere in the nature of $300,000 or more. So each one of these items was a part of the project. So the final report at the level three expansion was around a 31,000 square foot renovation and expansion. And then the next in order was a level two with an enclosure of 3,000 square foot right behind us in the east courtyard. And then a level one makeover of the current building, which was the lowest level, which was $12 million. The library board recommended against the level four, which was a 36,000 square foot building, which would have been $42 million, and a new facility at either lot C and spending out the Stokes Doby offsite. Those were, the new building cost was estimated around $35,679,000. And final report was approved by the board August 24th. And then, as I mentioned, was brought to City Council in October. Most recent facility condition analysis has $4.5 million in capital maintenance needs. And our ADA transition plan that's been presented to council lists $421,000. So some of those larger projects that are basically in terms of their typical life cycle. So what we do is they look at a typical life cycle of systems in the, in the building. So for example, we have 106 windows here in the library. Those are all at least 28 years old. So we have those typically last around 30 years. Air handler also is a 28 years old or more. Or at least, I think, some of these might even be older. But usually about 30 years cycle on that. The electrical system, there's a large cost on that. The electrical system, some of that's from 1956, some of it's from 1983. And exterior painting, plumbing, there's a large cost on that. HVAC system in the attic, some of the interior lighting needs to be, a lot of the interior lighting needs to be upgraded to LED. So it's a mix of lighting right now, that we're working on that. And ceiling finishes, you know, replacing the acoustic ceiling, we've got that here in this room, but throughout the other parts of the area, we were very low ceiling on the second floor. So all of those are issues, but a lot of these are, these are on life cycle replacements. And that's from the 4.21, I'm sorry, 4.5 million comes up from facility condition analysis, which is just like an estimate from there. And so my report shows on there that should also be budget allocated for, what we call FFNE, freshening fixtures and equipment. And I see that as generally about 20% of a project update, which is very consistent with the Group Four report, which would be around $1 million, $1.2 million. And I also see just doing those kind of like basic needs that we might see upward of 20, 25% increase costs if we're here on the central coast. And seems like every construction project, it's a bit higher here in other areas up there. And so with that, I think what I'd like to see is like, how do we go forward with this project? Because as we see, the dollar amounts were presented in 2018. We are now six years later from this initial report, which was submitted to the library board and approved almost five years ago. So with that, I think we look at that. And whether also another spot is I did speak with our past library board chair, Jim Thompson. And we had spoke just online and very briefly just about whether we propose an auction for if there was a municipal bond. And I don't know if there's any discussion or anything like that in any other department regarding that. But whether there would be a function for a level with a municipal bond or something to that level and without a municipal bond going forward with capital funding, NCIP funding, grant funding, donor funding. How do we propose a project that's possibly bond funded or a smaller project that would be the renovation or certain level? So would that open up to any questions?
I had a couple of questions for you going forward. Other than you weren't here when this was done and there was no pandemic from this to sun. And so I just wanted your take on, given the fact that we're now through the pandemic and some things have changed, and also that you have come in and made some changes in the library. Is this still an accurate, I mean, does this still make sense to you, what they are proposing to do? I mean, some of the things we've already done, like they talked about, oh, we'll do something with the makers place. Well, we've already moved forward on that. And they talked about the teen room and the children's room. Well, that's changed a lot too. So I, I was just wondering if, first of all, this makes sense. And then like second part, quite a part of it is that whole list of facilities that need to be, those basic things like the HVAC and all that stuff, is that included in level one? So if, for example, we decided to do level one, would that check off the list here?
Well, and can I say related to that, I have a similar question of, and you heard Kim and Brian, is that in light of the five years that have elapsed, the things that have happened, that the pandemic took place, is there anything about the proposals that hasn't aged well? Think about crossing off the list or changing.
Well, just to kind of, first off, we'll just say, what I would say, number one, level one does include building systems, which is one of the main system costs for, so student trustee Mauro, you're tiered. Anyway, on that side, the building systems on this one is fairly similar. And so the facility condition analysis we have is 4.5 million. The Group Four building systems is 5.5 million. So as I was saying, like if I said 4.5 and I said, yeah, we have a 25% additional cost, it's actually pretty similar to what Group Four put out there. You know, so I think you could use something like that $5.5 million as a pretty accurate guess.
So it includes things like painting and electrical system, like waste and that.
I would imagine. So they don't break it down that hard in detail. They just, they do a number per square foot. And I think a lot of times what they do is they do, you have 23,625 square feet per, x number of dollars per square foot. And there's a formula for that kind of thing. I would, I would say some of the things that we've done here as a group in here for the library has been actually spending money on what I would consider FFNE. So things like furnishings, fixtures and equipment. So things like what typically, the building systems, for example, like we haven't spent our personal money on replacing HVAC systems or anything like that. But what we've done on furnishing fixtures and equipment is we've said, okay, we're going to replace the tables in this building. Or we're going to replace the shelving up there and the public seating and the maker's face equipment. And that's that FFNE that you'll see that we've been able to spend. So we see the surface level available, but like it's the plumbing, the HVAC, it's that kind of stuff. My follow up with that is that, you know, Kim and I briefly talked about this earlier, which is that as an older building, the moment that you start breaking into it, the more that you have to really get it up to a newer code. And you have to figure out things like the second floor with a very low ceiling, which is what, seven and a half feet or something?
In the stacks, anything? Was that in the stacks?
In the stacks, yeah, like up on the whole second floor. Now with that, what's the current height it needs to be and the height of slipper and everything? Like the moment that we break into that, and that's why that I see level two and level three, it's such a high difference. Level two goes 12, level two goes to 29, and level three goes to 36,000, I mean, 36 million. There's a pretty large jump when you start going into physical building changes here. And that's where I think to, for me, I think that impacting parking could be a concern here because of there's, I think in the future, we're going to see impacted parking when they build independent housing. And then you have an impact on where people are parking around here at the council or other meetings at the library. Because people come to events or Colton Hall, lawn, you know, they come to different events and they park lot C, they park at the library, they park at City Hall. And if that lot is impacted because it's new housing, parking is going to be impacted here, you know, so like at the library. So I think losing parking, I think, is spending too far out. And so I think that's more like the high levels are more of a concern to my level, to my side at least. And overall, I think, you know, I do, I like working with Group Four, I've worked with them in the past too. I actually worked on a, at the same time, Monterey Public Library was working on this. I worked on a very similar project with this in an elementary county. We did, we did a very similar thing for our system, we worked with David Shnay and Andrea, I think that same team. So I'm familiar kind of with, with their project and their scope. But I think this is just a very blink, it was almost a blink slink in terms of like building a new facility and what the community wants. And I think, you know, Kim and I have talked about this in the past too, which is that one of the main things people want here is physical material still. And I think that Monterey, that's not what you see in all libraries right now, like across.
Some of the people here want is what?
Physical materials, like physical books.
Oh, oh, oh.
You know, that's one of the highest ranking things, whatever.
When you said physical, I was thinking of the building, architectural, you mean, things like actual books?
Actual books, and that when we do surveys here and other places, they are building a lot more space just for collaborative space. So I think, you know, when we look at this, I think we've, I think we're, you know, we, of course, you know, you build and you fill up whatever space you have, like a house. If you build, you have a three bedroom house, fill up your three bedroom house, your two bedroom house, build your two bedroom house. So I feel, that's how I feel that it's like we would fill up however much would be built out to there. So with that, it's a long way to say, I think this is still a, I still think this is a good report in terms of like saying this is what was needed. And as I was saying, like I think some of our FFNE, we've just been working on things to make the current building usable and livable, right? And, but we need those kind of structural, Kim, I don't know, would you like to?
No, I agree. I don't, I don't think the pandemic has really changed how people are using the building. I think, you know, there was a slow turnaround for people coming back and doing it for programs and stuff. But that stuff is coming back to where it was before the pandemic. So I don't see a huge change in the needs and goals.
So for example, when they talk about the current facility stuff, they talk about that the open floor plan is noisy and everyone's complaining about noise. Is that still true? I mean, aren't people still complaining about noise? And as I, I, you see, like the Pacific Grove Library, it's huge open, everything is open, but.
The children's areas.
That's true.
It's most blasted.
That's true.
It is, well, and so I think that's one of the things that like for us, it's still, you know, having adult computers next to the teen area, next to the children's area. Like we, there's not a lot really that you could do unless you build a wall, you know, right? Build some larger structure. So I think noise consists, you know, poise a concern in places, but that's why.
What did you say about the, where the kids area is and PG is?
Glass.
Closed.
It can close. So they, they even put aside, they put a glass.
As would that patio, it would turn into a sunroom, be enclosed.
Yeah, so those were, so that's why for us, like we have opened up the, for, for the library, what we've done right now to help mitigate some of these things with the current building is we've allowed Solarium to be bookable by the public. And it gets booked quite often, it's very, it's very popular, the Solarium room and the two privacy booths. So we've added the privacy booths as well as options, you know. So because for us, it's like, yeah, afternoons, yes, it will get a little noisy and we have teen programs. We know there's just kind of a noise issue on there. There are things that some people do on that, which is like acoustic tiles. You know, the ones we have right now are glued up on there. There are better like acoustic panels that you could use and different things like that. Or some places, because we have a high ceiling, some places use suspended acoustics. So there's other options that are out there for noise. So I still think, yeah, because it's, we just have, you know, people on a quiet computer next to teens in the afternoon, next to children, and it's just the proximity.
And what used to be the quiet room is now the make space.
Right, but that really wasn't a quiet room because anytime anybody walked upstairs or moved a chair.
It was a noisy room.
It sounds like somebody's dragging like a chalkboard or something. So it's, it's not a great quiet.
Was it well used as that when it was that, or did people?
It was well used as seating, and I'm sure some people went in there because it was a little bit more quiet. But the other issue with that is it was so far set away from staff that it was really hard to keep an idea, keep an eye on that space.
So like eye on that space, what, because they were shooting up or they were drinking?
Not that they were shooting up, but sometimes there'd be disagreements, like somebody's reading the newspaper too loudly or somebody's in there with their service dog and, you know, they're disagreeing with the person sitting across from them.
But it seems to be that quiet reading rooms in a lot of places, not just libraries even, but including libraries, are often away from the general flow of things, like away from our central desk, for example. So the fact that it's, you know, maybe 25 feet farther away than this room is from the central desk, I don't think that's something that should be criticized. Because I think, you know, quiet reading rooms are often out in left field somewhere. And part of the reason that they can be quiet is the distance from where the main user flow is.
But if staff was needed to intervene when there were problems, they could need to be.
Well, I mean, that would be true in this, in my other scenario too. Two people were arguing about something, making noise or rattling the newspaper or something, but.
Well, I would just say like what it was for me is that there is stuck tile on the roof. So it really sounds like you are driving, anybody moving or walking and people that are complaining, what I got here? That they didn't want people walking on the terrace above them because this was a quiet room. And you.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah.
So it's like.
Take the plans out of the stock.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I was just thinking to myself that, um, you know, at least one of the plans that we discussed following the G four's work uh, included, um, a new building. And and either the destruction or the vacation, vacating, vacation, meaning this building. And we found that, I mean, one of the things that G four did was we had committees of staff and participating people from them and from us. And that was the something PT, I forgot what it was. And then there was, I think, an LPT, which was a group of members of the community. And, uh, you know, this, I mean, given the mindset of Monterey, the city, this is one of our historic buildings. So that's one reason why it would be hard to say, yeah, we're just going to demolish it and build you a brand new, you know, modern looking one, because this is an historic building. And number two, because it's historic, it's old. Therefore, there will be some things in it that we have to put up with that maybe we would design out of the building of a new building. And what you're talking about with how quiet the quiet reading room or silent room or whatever it is, uh, is gives me that thought. And number three, I I think one reason why the board, when this was up for discussion handful of years ago, uh, made the decisions or came up with the sort of recommendations that we did is because we agreed with a lot of members of the public, we want to keep this building, this historic building. And we want to keep it looking that way. Now you could totally redesign this room and wouldn't change the out outside appearance of the building. So I I think keeping the historic flavor of it or whatever is more of an exterior than an interior. Because I mean, you could fill this up with fancy tables and computer stuff and it wouldn't change what it looked like from the outside. But anyway, keeping the historic aspect of this building was important. And we we uh saw that, we the trustees saw that because we and we heard it from a lot of the members of the community who were in that, was it LPT? Whatever that community oriented group was. And so that puts some constraints on what we were, what we could do, let's say we were given carte blanche to make any interior changes we wanted architecturally and use of space and everything. We would still have to say, well, this is what we start with. And, you know, this is what we got to adjust to. And, um, you know, it's like going into a little mom and pop cafe versus a great big giant restaurant.
But to add to that, we kind of had this, that that discussion, you're, you know, I would say the council also.
And I don't want to repeat, I don't want to, you know, re- repeat, you're talking about don't re- reinvent the wheel. I don't want to repeat the presentation or the discussion that we've already had.
Because they have fun. So I think all things being equal, we agreed, we took it to city council, right? And we said, was it either level two or level three? And I I I remember Tyler Williamson used the word, the Cadillac version, let's go for it, he said. But of course, there's there's no money for that. So I think all things being equal, if we could, we would just say, okay, we're done, we're all level thirty, let's go. We still.
Level thirty, yeah.
Yeah, because that uses the building, that reconfigures it to make it bigger, you know, that 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 satisfies everybody. The, I think the problem is that uh, and that takes care of all your infrastructure problems too, I mean, problem solved. But the, you know, the real question is, um, yeah, I mean, if we we can go back to city council and say, all right, we're ready to go, but there's no money. And so, you know, it all has to, you know, match.
As a result of that meeting that you had with the city manager staff and, um, in the minutes from our February meeting, I have two questions pursuant to that meeting. One was, it says, I'm reading from our our minutes now, city manager committed, committed to funding for the items that need immediate replacement or upgrade this year and continuing to look for committing funding on other projects. I would like to know what you think he means is already committed to funding. Number one, number two, my question is, it says here, he meaning Hans, also ask for the long term vision capital improvements for the library. And when you you look at the definition of vision in city documents, as I did earlier, the vision is your quote desired future, very short definition, desired future. If I desire ping pong tables in this room, that's part of my vision then. You know, so I don't think a vision necessarily needs to be constrained, although he also says that we should have a retreat, i.e. this discussion we're having today. To, uh, the result of which would be a vision of library facilities, meaning your desired future, uh, using the G four feasibility study and reasonable expectations given funding, the current funding climate and increased expenses, both the cost of whatever you do and just general operating expenses are more more now than they were back then. So I guess the thing that frustrated me as I prepared for today was really in the in our agenda for today, and I'm looking at for today, fast forwarding through all the pages here. It says something like the board will approve a plan today. And right below that, it says the board will discuss.
Yeah, Jamie changed it to develop.
Well, well, I don't think we're here to, I don't think we're ready to vote on anything. I think we can discuss and we can talk about what homework we need to do for the next meeting to further the discussion. But we can't talk about specifics, we can't talk the the phrases in city documents, strategic priorities, there's a pyramid diagram and the very top is vision. And about the third level down, strategic priorities, how to advance goals and support with considering the value, what is it, value driver at the same time. And those are more tangible things, those are more like, well, you know, you're going to build this or you're going to provide that. And the 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 value driver for the library is to provide learning opportunities and foster community connections. Hard to be more vague than that or broad, I mean, not vague, but broad. I mean, we have a lot of things you could put on that checklist.
But but to add to that, what does reasonable mean? I mean, that's, you know, when Han says reasonable, what does reasonable mean?
Well.
Who's reasonable?
You know, and 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 he he's asking for, and earlier Brian was either reading from or something, the library facility needs document that was given to the board in January. And it things like, um, up upgrading the restrooms because they haven't been updated since the nineteen eighties. The, um, we need LED fixtures, the single pane glassware is costing money, even if they're not cracked and broken. It's costing money because it takes more to eat a room or a house that's single pane. The poor conditions that we have for storing history room archival materials. The, uh, as Bert Ryan said today, the electrical stuff hasn't been upgraded since nineteen eighty three. At the most recent, says here fifty six eighty three. So it's basically, to me, this is our vision one A. If we're talking about our desired future, well, our desired future is right here, it's already in writing, at least at one level, at one step toward. Now, we could say we want to have more of a certain kind of program. But, you know, you need staff, you need facilities, you need supplies, you need all of that to have a successful program. So I I'm looking at this as our.
But Brian, Brian has been one.
I think we're talking in circles, right? To be honest, but but because I would say like a couple of things, you asked a couple of different pieces, what were the parts that the city manager talked about, and there were some immediate needs.
Yeah, he was saying he was committed to funding.
That's going to be like whether we have, like, we have not approved the city budget for the capital funds, what's how much is going to be there. But there are items that are electrical distributions, um, switchboards, distribution panels, updates to the dumbwaiter, there were some things like that that were considered, that were identified as current I needs. And then other pieces that we discussed at that time were, do we set aside a list of these are projects that we know that are one, two, three hour projects, so somebody, a building worker has two extra hours on a shift. It knows we have a list of projects, of small projects, that they come back and they just work on that kind of item right there as time elapses, we have a list on there. So we don't have a specific list on there, but as for vision and values, I think, what we look at, we're not looking at what that's on that city document. The city looked at a planning meeting that happened a couple of months back in the library in terms of the city. Council was fairly low in terms of where it was on their priorities. Right now their priorities is housing, right now their their priorities are public seating. So we, looking at that as values and vision, I would say we are setting what value is for this board or this facility, not for programs. We're looking at what and going back to, we don't need to know what kind of programs we're running, we need to say this is what we need to do. So back to what I said in the very beginning, do we say, in the climate of we have X number of dollars available through a bond and we're raising a certain amount like this, what does that look like? Does it look, because the level three basically says take out all of the nineteen eighty three expansion and replace that. And that would be a huge project, that's what I'm saying, that's a big jump, right? That's twenty plus million dollars for a vision. If that's not available, is the vision that we are going to go forward with the project here on, that's more of a level one.
More like or two?
Level two has still kind of some expansion of taking off some of, because level two takes off some of the nineteen eighty three as well. And that's why it's it's a visual ten million dollars. So you still have to figure out like what's, is it a level two, is it a level one? But what is the, what is the vision? And I think this kind of conversation is about what is the board want to present to council about? Are we, is is the board still interested as level three is the option? At the time, it was level three was the option, level two was the next, level one was then all along, and level four was not an option. So I think that's what this is supposed, that's what we're looking at, it's like, what are these options? Is this still valid or where we go?
So we're we're taking the group four document. We're reevaluating to a certain extent based on our current situation. But we're, the the general path that each one takes, we we're trying to decide, do we still think that a level three is feasible to do and desirable? Um, and the cost factor is, I mean, it's not that different between level two and level three really. Uh, the question is, do we want to expand? And not just take care of the existing infrastructure needs, which are going to be taken care of in any scenario that we choose.
Right, but and and I just want to follow that, um, that one of the things Han said, Bob, is you want to just, you need to tell us, do you want to just do what's on this list, like you said, and give up? And and say, we're not going to do, uh, throw away the group four. If you, if we pick this list and say, that's all we want to do, Hans will say, great, let's go. Throw the G four, never have.
We don't have a vision.
We'll fix all the things in this building and.
When he said, or when, while I was reading from, he said he was committed to funding things that needed to be done. That's this list?
No, it's it's the things that the city said have to be done right now. The city did a, um, an inventory and said some of the things need to be done in five years, some of the needs need to be done in seven years, some need to be done in ten years. He said the ones that need to be done in zero years will fund it, it was about what, three hundred thousand or something like that.
Someone was duplicated, so I think it's closer to around two hundred thousand.
Yeah, well, that is the stuff that's falling apart this minute, but if we settle to that, we don't go back to the well. I think what he's saying is, here's your chance to say, you know, are we going to do something for the library? Or are we just going to fix the broken stuff?
No, well, then 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 we shoot for the moon, we don't uh feel handicapped by uh, current funding that's available or not available, and we say, this is what we want. And he'll say, well, sure, if all of a sudden some donor gave us a hundred million dollars, you could have it. But right now, uh, what was the phrase that I read, something about, uh, uh, the given funding climate. But we need to ask for more. I mean, it's like you go to Santa Claus at Christmas and you rattle off ten things. And even a smart kid won't expect to get all ten. But the more you put out there for Santa to pick from, maybe the more you'll get. And so I agree totally with that strategy. I was just trying to figure out what he meant or what was meant by referring to what he said as he committed to funding.
He's got this, I do know. But but so the real question is, would it be possible to say something like, given the current climate, we'll go with level one because that fixes every, that contains this list and fixes everything. With the understanding that in, you know, when when things get better or when we're ready to go after a campaign, was level one is a subset of level two, I don't know whether it may not.
Well, then why don't we just start right off the top with two or three and they'll fund what they can and tell us that they will do what they can if we raise X dollars more.
Right, and and maybe do it in steps.
Oh, sure.
The first part.
But start from the very beginning, that I mean, the biggest feedback full of stuff, not just, don't say, okay, we're satisfied with level one right now, but if that works, we're going to come back to you. I think we should start with the big uh, collection of things. And like you said, it'll have to be done in stages, no matter what happens.
Because I said, I don't know, just because the difference, the main difference between level two and level three and a facility commission was these kind of things, level two and three are a demolition of your nineteen eighty three edition.
Which is the upstairs?
And and the side of the building. So it's a big piece of, it's a big piece of the building. This was not just one terrace, it's a larger piece of the building, so with, but that's, that's, level two is also a piece in there. So that's why if you go to page forty three and you'll see kind of more of a, a little bit more of a breakdown just of that. In terms of in terms of like how much you see the difference on there. And that's, that's what I mean about you know, on on this piece on there, level two is a level three, it's renovation, East Library, new addition.
So can I go back and ask again any questions? So when this was done, we had forty three employees or something like that, right? Because there was no pandemic. When when G four looked at us, they just saw it. So then we went down to, you know, two employees or something like that, and now we're building back. We know pretty much that we never go back to where we were. So the question is, are we still short on, say, staff offices, is that a problem? Given the fact that we're probably never, or in our lifetime, going to go back to where we went before. Number two, demolish.
I mean, I mean, that's a, well, that's an odd question because we had more staff before, but we have less offices. We have less staff now, so I don't know, you know, we we don't need to build more offices because we didn't have that many offices in the past, like we haven't. Like most of this office space has not been converted into something else. If one changes, the children's area office has been turned into a different place. Century, that's that's one exclusion, but there's nothing.
But you're saying, so you don't, you don't need additional office space, for example, you don't have that.
I don't, I mean, I don't see that need for that, I mean, there's some of that working space. There was thoughts on this about, you know, there was discussion before I started here about automated material handling systems. And that circulation is down, those do take a lot of service contracts and a lot of tech. And that, um, circulation is down, those do take a lot of service contracts, and a lot of technology does take, they are pretty heavy. Um, and they also, those systems have like a ten year to twenty year lifespan, and a ten year lifespan of a two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred thousand dollar object for automated control handling, there's also a very short kind of lifespan for material. So I just wanted to say like, is that would do something about, when the plan was in that, would impact staff area, then you'd have to build staff areas. But as of currently, I mean, it can be kind of packed in there, but I don't know that we have to build how, and build something specific.
Well, even though the, the difference in cost of level two to level three is, you know, not much. It's the, the jump from one to two is huge, the jump from two to three is not that much, but the demolition of fifteen thousand square feet as opposed to one thousand square feet. That's, that's correct, um, because you do have to pick about downtime and the timeline to.
Yeah.
Complete all work, but also how, how long you have to, um, block parts of the building to the public.
Well, I think that's going to be a necessity if we do anything that's significant.
Well, there's a big, big spread between a thousand square feet and fifteen thousand.
They did say that you're going to probably have to close the library and, you know.
For level two?
I think so, I think they did say.
Well, that would have to be a lot less time than.
Yeah, it may be less time, you know, but I think it's still going to happen.
Well, everything would really switch out, either one, because that fills up California history room, as you see in there. Children's area moves around into a new area in level two with the closure. Community room changes, so yeah, there are different changes based on, I mean, those terms of plan, so any of the stuff has to move out, and just get that timber, timber space moved.
The Pacific Grove Library was completely closed for quite a.
Yes, yes, they moved it to the home building.
Right, that's right.
But what we do? Um, probably want to ask one of those vacant buildings on Alborac. You know, but the CBS or something like, what can you rent out?
Or the ordway.
The ordway, yeah, yeah, the ordway, like you, I mean, having a temporary rental where you have everything on gondolas, because then you could just like move everything on there on the gondolas for a bit, and have like a big square footage for the, for the service area. That's what I would recommend on something like that. And then you have like a one year or so lease for a large facility like that. And then, you know, then you go back, because you want to try to get as much, I really don't think, like, if there is a construction time, especially if it's a larger piece, you don't want staff involved in trying to, oh, you know, today we've got to turn off the water.
Right.
And by the way, we had a, you know, electrical line, or, you know, whatever, it's like, those things happen on any of the things, you want to get people out of them, that's working area as much as possible.
Well, it's not up to us to find the money, we could suggest certain things, and we can be part of certain things. And that is indeed something that we said we were going to work on, is talk about what was going to happen to the ad hoc advocacy group, was it going to morph into something else, was there going to be a different group? Or what was going to happen about that, but, um, seems to me those, those are two important things that we, I mean, we could talk about. We want either level two or level three, which are going to involve a lot more money.
Right, I think if we're talking about thirty million dollars, I don't think advocacy is going to be. We have a beautiful.
Yes, yes, that's all we have. What we have to talk about, yes, involving more people in the community, involving some business partners or some other sorts of partners.
Campaign is a really big thing, it has, first, uh, personally, you need somebody, I mean, it would be, you know.
You'd have a.
You'd hire a professional fundraiser.
Exactly.
With a track record.
You need to have somebody who's going to spearhead the fundraising, come up with a, a real plan, um, it, it's a big deal.
Because it can't be us.
No, no, I mean, they can certainly work with them, they can work with them, we can all work on it, but, you know, you're right, Bob, it needs to be somebody who's.
Am I, just out of the loop here, or when I hear the word vision? And when I see it defined as your desired future, I don't see specifics. I see broader ideas, what I want, what I would like to accomplish, and within the rubric of the library, learning opportunities and, uh, community connections. I mean, that's part of our charge here. So I see broader things. I don't see so much how many square feet we have. I, I say, well, I would like to provide X, Y, and Z, and if that takes the square footage that's in plan two versus plan one, or three versus two, then that's the way the cookie grumbles, you know?
But we're really talking about capital here. We really are talking about building, is what, is what Hans, when we had this discussion about, we talked about facilities here. And, yes, of, of course, we want some of the enhanced community connection. The, the G four, when you guys worked on the G four, you, you surveyed the community, you talked about what they wanted, you gave them questionnaires.
Yeah.
You know, and so they did that work in some sense, so we'd come back and say to him, you know, we like these programs or that, he didn't care about that. They're talking about, what do you need to renovate this building to make it do what you already said you want to do with this building? And so, so this, this is kind of what we need to do, is come back and say, you know, we have immediate needs, yes. And, and the question is, can those needs be subsumed into one or all of these plans? Maybe the best thing to do is to recommend some kind of phased approach and say, look, our house is burning down here, so first we need to put out the fires, you know, we need to fix the electrical, we need to fix the windows, we need to fix the toilets, you know, whatever it is we need to do. But that's going to be part of, of phased thing, that's ultimately going to lead us to maybe G four, I, you know, uh, suggestion thirty, or, or maybe we want to say, well, we'll settle for G four one, or G four two, I, I don't know.
And I think even if you said, hey, we're happy with level one, that's still not going to happen for several years, and we don't have years to deal with some of the things that are emergencies now. So it would have to be phased, and money would have to be spent before capital campaigns would.
Right, well, I think part of it is that the city is going to have to pony up.
Right.
It's just like he said, he's going to give us the three hundred thousand or whatever to fix the things that are broken. You know, so, so the city's going to have to pony up in addition to fundraising. But his idea was, let's do a capital campaign with a thermometer outside and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, my sense is, if you're going to do that, you might, if you're in for a penny, you might as well be insured, Bob.
Well, you know, when, when he said, uh, somewhere was said that, oh, quote, adequate funding sources are not currently available from the library, general fund, or trust fund budgets, that's what I said. Yeah, and that was a quote from, I, I found it, uh, something related to our January board meeting. To say that adequate funding isn't currently available, let's say from the general fund, doesn't mean it's not there. It means, it could mean it's being used by the city for something else.
Definitely means that.
Yeah, and I think we need to, um, you know, frankly, we're tired of being the third choice. You know, and, uh, you, you put money elsewhere, that can be documented, where the city has spent money. And how about taking turns? How about taking the funding, the dollars? And make it available from the general fund for the library, and let somebody else sit on the sidelines for a while.
I just wanted to add something, and then you have, somebody wanted to take a public comment out there too. Um, but just that I made, um, made that note, because if you watch recent council meetings, or attended recent council meetings, this is a consistent discussion point, which is that the city of Monterey has less spent, set aside for CIP, which is not NCIP, CIP projects every year versus other cities across the region, like as a percentage wise. And so that's kind of on that same thing of measure P, measure S, which is road work, where that, that stuff was in there, but then there's CIP, and then there's, CIP dollars are less per capita on there. Um, and the other part I just want to mention is.
You mean compared to other cities?
Other, other cities, yeah, Marina or Seaside, or like has a percentage on there. And then, so the, that's where I'm kind of going, as we're going, looking at where dollars, in my sense is, when you don't get set aside enough every year to maintain all of the facilities, and this city has a ton of facilities all around, and competing priorities like the wharf that are falling into the water, and you're damaged, you know, wharf is here, so is it the wharf, or is it the library? Those are competitive things. So with that also, next Tuesday in the council agenda, you'll see that they're doing a walking tour to the public safety facility to look at the facility, and I don't, with a discussion afterwards about what are the needs of that facility? That is under council agenda, so you'll see that's.
That was going to be one of my requests, was to, uh, invite city council to come for a little after hours tour over here and walk through the facility, um, before we go to present.
It would have to be, would have to be a, a meeting of them, because if, if it was more than a quorum, we, and if something would come up on agenda, we would have to have them, we'd have to have that agenda.
Agenda, okay, right, but it could be done.
Theoretically, yeah, in the same way that they're doing public safety, it's just a matter of getting everything on council or on different tasks.
And this is a little off of that, but I also thought that we should invite NCIP for, um, for a tour, and they have meetings here?
They hold their meetings.
Yeah, yeah, so could we, uh, attach some time to show them through?
As then to delegate part of their time of a meeting for, for their company.
Yeah, I think that would be a public works kind of question, when they have time on their, their tours, and what, what their agenda is, or if we just, people just invite out a trustee, vice president, representative.
Did you just say there was a?
There was a public, public person, um, raised their hand for that.
Why don't you acknowledge them and ask, rather than, because they probably were responding to something we were talking about an hour ago?
I was just.
For anyone who would like to make a public comment, you are welcome to do so. You may unmute yourself, and if you'd like to state your name, you're welcome to do.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you very much. This is Jim Thompson. And as mentioned in Brian's staff report, uh, when I was on the library board, I worked with, uh, Bob Petty on a committee working with, uh, G four, so I have, um, a fair amount of background on the, on the G four report. And I wanted to make just a couple of comments and one suggestion. Um, one of the comments was something Diane had kind of touched on, which is that level three isn't all that much more expensive than level two, but provides about five thousand, uh, square feet more, which would have been very helpful in terms of, uh, youth and children, and the local history room, allow the library to do a much better job. So I, I still think level three is worth, uh, having as the desired goal. Um, and in that context, I also wanted to add that when, when we did the study, we knew that the cost of level three, you know, was not going to be well received, and it was our impression at the time that for that to be realistic would probably require a public bond measure of some sort, or some sort of tax measure requiring a vote of the people. And we also talked at that point that we knew the public safety building, both police and fire headquarters, needed work. And there was a thought that perhaps we could have a joint measure of the library and the public safety building, um, for some sort of bond measure or tax measure. And, um, I'm still hoping that might be a possibility. I don't think it's realistic to do fundraising for forty million dollars, probably. Um, unless there's, somebody has a rich uncle that I'm not aware of. Um, but I think it's probably worth trying to keep level three as a goal, uh, if there was to be some sort of municipal bond measure, uh, perhaps with the public safety facility as well. Um, but as a two-tier approach, while keeping that as a goal, to focus on the things that are more realistic, that you could do in the short term, uh, more of a level one, or even, even less than level one, to get some things done. So that's my suggestion, is to try to do a two-tier approach to not lose sight of tier, of the, uh, level three alternative with the possibility of a public bond measure, uh, to make that more realistic. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, to work on the things that can be done more realistically. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
One thing that Jim just, uh, mentioned, or throughout is a possibility that I think could really work to our, meaning the library's benefit, was that if the city was going to put out a bond measure, uh, to fund things that they don't have in the general fund right now, that they don't have enough money now. And it was, um, police, fire, and the library. It's like getting, getting permission to sit with the popular kids. And, uh, it would have us included in discussions and in, article, we use the words, the vision of, uh, those entities. I said a long time ago, and it was when we were, maybe we were, when we were just starting with G four or something, and I remember Nat was in the room, and I said that regardless of how you feel about fire and, uh, fire and police, I think the library is one of the essential components of the city, uh, much more so than any others, than possibly, uh, public safety, fire, police. And to be together with them, like Siamese twins, I just, like I say, be invited to sit with the popular kids and, uh, be good for us, especially if ahead of time there's some, um, agreement, formal agreement, formal agreement, as to, well, if we get a hundred thousand dollars positive, I mean, who, which of those, those three departments gets how much? Um, and then they can do what they can do with it. Uh, that might be something to propose. Of course, the question there, I think, is that it's a bond issue, rather than a capital campaign. Somewhere you have to start paying the people that bought those bonds back, which means the city has to come up with the bond, the principal plus X percent that you said, an investor who's buying the bond would receive, right?
Brian, wasn't there some talk about, uh, an agreement between the city and NCIP? That they were this year, or I guess it was last year that's gone into this year, they were going to, um, in the, the fire stations, that was going to be a joint project between the city, the local money and NCIP money?
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I know that, uh, two of the fire stations were approved.
Okay.
And, uh, in the, and San Pete the last year, there was Hilltop as well, was one of the sites that was also approved for some renovation work as well. Um, I don't recall how much additional kind of capital funding was set aside for fire stations, but that's why my initial discussion on the part was what I was saying with level one, where I find that, you know, if we were looking at this, even looking at twenty nineteen dollars, and looking at, you know, breaking down the, like, as I mentioned, you know, the facility condition report that I have, four point five is, you know, five by five, five point five with, with group four, so it's not really that different, considering I think four point five, that they have this kind of loan, that felt this about twenty to twenty-five percent loan from us being in the central coast. But their totals on there, you know, then you're looking at, technology signage, design, um, project work, and they have permits, city fees, all these actually, they're, they're numbers additional about two point eight million dollars, permanent fees of additional costs, that's pretty high, so I think that number could range anywhere from costs. It's pretty high. So I think that number could range anywhere from $7 to $15 million if a level one, depending on how you really look at it, in my mind. Um, so, yeah. Sorry, I'm losing track of my brain. But, but yeah, just to think that the, altogether, this, um, the funding for getting, you know, $7 million, $12 million, $15 million, there's not like a single source in my mind, right? There's not like a, NCIP is not gonna vote on, boom, we're gonna take care of this entire project, and that's the only project we're gonna do, right? I don't, in my mind at least, I don't, I don't see that from what I watch the meetings and everything. Capital improvement project, I don't see us having that in any annual budget. Same thing. I don't see us having set aside $12 million or, I don't know. So it's capital project, NCIP, you know, looking at donors, looking at grants. And that's why I was thinking level one is the type of project that you do if you engage a fundraising strategy and come in there with multiple avenues of how you want to approach it because it's keeping with this existing facility and know how, you say, you want to do with that and you allocate that. But as, um, Speaker Jim Thompson mentioned as well on there, which is that, you know, $36 million is a much larger ask if we're saying, okay, we wanna do this for SAP and NCIP and donors. It's just, it's a much bigger, bigger task. And that's why I was saying earlier on that I see that as the option if we're looking at bond and adding-
It always has to be a bond issue.
Yeah.
We're not gonna get there.
Yeah, that's just, it's such a large ask because I feel like with the multi-year raise that money, by the time you raise that money, the project cost is now jumped up even more. So that's where I think, for me, I think that the, the thought is, is that where do we go from here with, with this discussion? Do we wait to see what's going on with council and with public safety and what their direction is before we make a choice and then we come back to the next meeting or?
I think the, one of the steps we have to take, uh, early on in this process is to identify concretely the things that you need to do sooner than later because no matter what we do, if we wanna get to level two or three, we're talking about years to get. It's gonna happen next year or even the year after that probably, right? We wouldn't even get anything on the ballot for another year or two.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that because level three, because you'll see, because the demo, the model is just 15,000 square foot, you don't wanna spend several hundred thousand dollars on plumbing because it's, it's the demo, you know, it's some of that area over there.
That's where I was going. Because I, I think that we need to get more concrete about what, because you wouldn't wanna spend money that you're gonna turn around and turn back.
Exactly.
What you have to do-
Now.
Now, without spending money that would go down the drain.
Exactly.
Knowing that your intention is to get to, to the bigger renovation.
Yeah, but I, I still-
You need to present that to the community that way too, that, you know, that we have a big list and we're holding off because we want more for you.
Right. I think we still need to get the funding from council as well about like where exactly is their vision from going for funding so that we know to communicate that, you know, because it's a, it's a much different communication with the community saying $12 million versus $36 million, where are we gonna go, right? So I think we, we have to get like, hear from council what their objectives are with the public safety facility.
Right. And, and to piggyback on Bob's thing about, you know, sitting with the popular kids, um, I think we're better off not sitting back and waiting to see what happens with public safety, but to, but to get ahead of that and say, we still wanna do what you recommended, City Council, before, and we like to explore how to get to public safety. Because if we are actually tied to public safety, that means when they go ahead and we go ahead, I mean, yes, yes, the proportions need to be determined, but it seems to me that a whole, if, if in principle people agree that there's gonna be some kind of bondage, then we can hammer up the details. But I think so the two things are, one, we are still interested in level three. Two is we wanna only immediately do the things that don't have to be ripped out when we go to level three, but, you know, the rest-
And I can't wait till-
That'll get us-
But our necessities.
Yes, the necessities that, that'll get us to level three. And then, uh-
Well, what you're saying is then we specify the necessities and say, okay, you're committed to doing those already. Uh, so let's get those done and we will continue the process of determining how best to reach the goal that would, uh, be level, uh-
I'd like to add to that proposal that we, that we, uh, get a commitment for this year's and next year's necessities. Knowing that we're probably three years, we're in year three before-
Or whatever, that, yeah, that's weren't any pretty, I'm just saying.
Well, it's, it's twice as much money, so I don't think you wanna leave that unsaid.
But let's say, okay, let's do these things and, uh, we've given you a list of a lot of needs and, you know, how they are and everything in this, uh, library facility needs document. And let's get those done. And at the same time, we will, uh, plan the best way to accomplish what is, uh, required to fund level three. And if that's going out on our own, if that's being tied in with public safety or whatever, you know, we, we can pick the best one. But like, I think you were saying, sort of, or Jamie was saying, sort of separating the two, the, the vision, the desired future and the immediate need just because, you know, you gotta deal with maintenance on a regular basis.
All right. So, from you, yeah, I mean, I think that, um, trying to say, all right, we're ready to move forward to probably raise money for level three is gonna be really difficult. And I think the bond issue piece is a, is a good one. I mean, this, uh, the citizens of Monterey are voting for the street maintenance, you know, measures consistently. And, um, if, if, if they're willing to vote on the street measures, I think that they would also go to the library and the public safety. Uh, the, the thing is about, you know, there was a questionnaire that went out a couple of, I think right before you came, that, that they put out on Have You Say, the city manager, and they said, rank in order of importance, what do you want? Police, fire, library. And the library came out, surprise, surprise, last because it's Maslow's hierarchy. If your house is burning down, you know, you wanna put out the fire, get a library book, you know? And so it, it what, you know, it wasn't quite fair.
Right, yeah.
But people do feel they need, you know, public safety, people need fire prevention. I mean, we're in a fire world here. So, um, you know, putting them together, I think is, is-
So I'll, I'll put that, if, if there is no, what's the place?
If there was no bond?
Yeah, there is no bond. Do, or, or what's the next option? Well, I don't know that we need to, I mean, we could speculate what that might be, but I don't think that's part of what we have been asked to turn in to the city manager and the city council right now. I think Marcia kinda summed it up. And if, if we think strategically it's good to be, uh, holding hands with the police and fire and be part of that group of three essential departments in the city's list of departments, then great. And I mean, that's why I said years ago that besides maybe fire and, uh, police, library is the essential one.
But if there, but if there's no bond that goes out, is what I'm asking. If there's no bond that goes out for police and fire and-
Well, you're part of it. It seems to me that we need to plan for the falling apart facilities to get us to the point where we can do this renovation. So, um, I don't know if it's possible to compare, to look at your list of facilities that you need fixed, look at this and say, these are the facilities that are gonna get us, you know, this is, these are the fixes that we need in the next few years to get us to that place and, and present it as a, as a sort of package. That the gold standard is the level three. We can't wait for a lot of the parts of it. And so if that foundation doesn't happen, we keep working on that while, in fact, every year, these things are fixed.
I also think that we need to acknowledge that we probably wouldn't get to level three without a bond. I don't, I don't. Well, I wonder if, if, if there's no bond, what's the city gonna do to, uh-
Fire and police.
For fire and police? How are they gonna get the money for that? And by being part of the bond question, then when they say, well, we didn't get the bond, so you have to come up with alternative funding mechanisms.
For all three.
For all three, because we're, you know, the three are joined at that point.
Yeah, I mean, where I'm looking at on my side, I mean, because that's what I think, what this, what this changes is that we don't go forward with the NCIP request, which is what we, we have been talking about, is NCIP request would be related to, unless there's something, that's what I mean, because if this is a larger, you know, the, the things that are on here are you don't design an HVAC system or the 30% of the position that's going to be contained and not the 70% of the building that's going to be demolished, right?
But I don't think you sit out on NCIP ever, anyway.
What I mean though is like, the five-year estimated cost that we have on here for systems is $2.7 million, right? And so I'm saying that the level three is a large demolition of the 1983 extension. And so there's a piece of that, like of what would you do on there? That's very difficult. I mean, I was just saying, in my mind, looking at it is if you were to go in there and say, okay, you know, you might say, it's update the restrooms and the project to update certain restrooms or the exterior of the building. Um, but a lot of those large items that need to be up here are systems, it's the whole systems of various libraries, right? When they did the upgrade in 1983, there's the expansion from 1983, but there's the 1956 base. It's just like Monterey Museum of Art down the street, which has been renovated multiple times. And because of that, you have your systems that interact with each other.
But there must be some things that could be done immediately that would have to be destroyed if, say, all of a sudden, somebody gave us $39. Um, I mean, and focus on those as NCIP requests in the short term.
There must be some.
And if not, let's keep our face in front of NCIP and come up with some. But I think there are probably some already in front of us that, uh, we can ask for funding for.
I think it's important to, yeah.
And that was something that Constance did mention in the meeting is that, yeah, if you have, well, he was saying that, oh, NCIP money is city money, but-
Is what money?
It's city money. So it's not like there's city money and then there's NCIP. But, um, they go through different processes. But if there was some way to combine general fund money with NCIP money, my impression was that was what was done with the fire station, that some of it was paid by the city and some-
And it's true of the sports center and many other things, NCIP, that they did fund the whole thing, which, you know, they put into the boss. So, you know, there could be, before we wrap, is it the appropriate time to talk about fund development coordinator? Because do we, are we agreed that even if there were a bond, we also will need a capital campaign at some point in the next year or two? And that we don't have the capacity to raise 12, 29, or $36 million for that one?
Oh, yeah, right, right. I would see that as a contract as a term, not as a, you know, you would have that as a special project, because the way other places have done where you might hire somebody who is for that term and for that project.
Right.
You know, that, that is their role and their goal and their, their focus.
Right.
If we were to do something like that, I would say if we had a project aligned that was up there, you hire somebody, your role-
Be a person specifically for that capital.
For the capital. Because I think that's either a contract with a, whether that's a contract with somebody that doesn't like, as a, this is a contract for that, where there's like, you know, certain companies have worked on strategies for that, or is it like a per hour? Because if it's an hourly work, it's a little different than just a contracted.
And do you think that, that this will need that with or without a bond? Are we, are we agreed that we're going to have to do fundraising in addition to?
Brian, you mentioned a couple of bonds, like for streets and stuff that were recently successfully managed, uh, by the city.
With your PNS, and PNS is about to expire.
Now, did they hire a, the equivalent of a fund development person to, you know, get the bond ask, you know, measure S? I mean, I, I wonder if a, a person ever hires on not to solicit donations, but basically to solicit votes for a bond.
There's typically, there are, there are firms that their role is polling. There are firms that do polling and do research on that role and do outreach. And then that's a contract, that's a contracted person.
Yeah, yeah.
I, as I've mentioned multiple times, it's, it's a very, um, odd thing to have a city employee raising funds for a project like that. And that's why I find it's better to have a contractor, someone that's contracted on that side. It's like, we're kind of, um, to raise funds for a specific project, not like a fundraising person on that side. Because there is a fundraising agency with, with, which we work with, which is the Monterey Public Library Fund and Foundation. That's the fundraising arm. They're the ones that do the fundraising on most other systems across the entire state of California. It's a fundraising foundation, not a city employee. City employees should-
Yeah.
Stay out of that kind of work. And I'll consistently say that, is that my feeling is that we should stay out of that side of having somebody, you look at CSU Monterey Bay and say, you know, CSU East Bay where I went to school, it's not, it's a department that works with them, but it's a fundraising department of school that works on that, like alumni group. That's who raises funds for you. So it's a, it's an arm of that, an extension, but it's, there should be a distinction on my mind for having a contract with somebody that does that work specifically for that project, which is your goal.
I, I, I just wanna add to that, that using that, um, all at the table at once, if the bond issue with, if it was for police, fire and library, that kind of takes the, it's not only the library trying to pass bond issue, it's a team. And, and that seems to me, um, it takes a little bit of pressure off of library people to do it. Although I think you're right, the capital, there, there's gonna have to be fundraising on the part of the library also, but it's not-
For the whole thing, right?
It's not for the $36 million.
Right, we'll have to party now and do fundraising decides.
The, the way that other libraries have hired, work with, have done things because there's a capital campaign and the Friends and Foundation, what they, how they work on is the capital campaign works on capital facilities. So the FFNE is typically done by the Friends and Foundation because FFNE is not something that is on the capital law, right? So you, you were to go in there and you say, we need new computers and we need new furniture.
And those are the things that are still safe to move forward on, that aren't gonna be forfeited with a, with a renovation.
So if you were to go through, for example, like with the Friends and Foundation is very chocolate and wine, having the, the gondolas and the shelving was much easier for us to do the chocolate and wine event than do the tents on the floor. And so if we were to have that out first, first or second floor?
Eleven, closing in thirty minutes. Thank you.
Um, but yeah, just those kind of things like that, which is, that's an FFNE. And that's what I spoke about earlier in there where I was looking at like, what have we done in this? And a lot of the stuff we focused on, on brands, also FFNE and working on that with the Friends and Foundation.
So what we do from here, what is our next step?
Right.
We'll practice it. And, yeah, present to, to the city council.
No, first, I think we have to take it back to Hans first.
Well, the wording said. It said shared with the city manager, taken to the city council and shared with the city manager or something like that.
We are going to see. But, but I, I think we have some understanding and principle. Of what, of, of what we think the right thing to do is.
And that's where I was trying to get to the, the list that Bob had in his hand. We would need to ID the things that we either need to do now or we can do that wouldn't feel waste. Given natural plans.
Given our optimistic view of the future, right?
Right, and then those would be the things that we want to go hard to the city for.
Right.
And, and to, and to NCIP for.
Right, right.
While.
These are gonna get us to.
With the long view. But I think it's really important to, um, let the city know. That we are not giving up on the G four proposals, that we are not saying, oh, we want to do this little bunch of things and we're just gonna live with the library.
And so what we brought you is.
You know, for the next ten years, we're gonna live with this.
Yeah.
Right?
And maybe ten years.
We just let five years go by and be saying, oh, yeah, I'm.
Yes.
You're ready for now.
Yeah, I don't think that we want to let it be lost on anyone, but we already lost five years. And the building further deteriorated during that time. And so we aren't here to look at a really long-term plan, we're down to it.
So there are two lists that were being discussed that we, we do. I mean, Marcia and I, because we attended the meeting, have, have the one from Public Works. But this one that, that you were quoting, Bob, came out in our January package.
Yeah, right.
And there may be some changes in that.
Right.
Uh, since, since Brian created this list. And there is definitely some overlap between this, but this one that you were quoting.
Oh, when this is going to meet the end of its life, um, so. So it could be, you know, a combination of those two. That these are hard asks, now that we have, you know, we know what we need to do on our side.
So, um, was it you that said two years or three years? Somebody said, you said, the big question, what would be good is to have a sort of, you know, spreadsheet or something that says.
I agree.
This is what we have to be done in year one. And this is, you know, this is year two, isn't it? I don't know, these are compliance issues. Yes, yes.
We are using that, and using that and using the G four. So these are the things that sound so bad up to.
I, I'm just gonna go back though, because if you look at the G four and you look at the level three, look at it closely. And it switches a lot of the areas. It's a lot, no reason to worry. So if you were to do things that need to be done in here, like, as I mentioned on here, like, if you start working on HVAC, you can't work on HVAC. Until you start getting approval for level three, right? That's some of the things that are, there are on there. And windows, like, you know, if you're just gonna start doing renovation on twenty thousand square feet of the building, you start working on.
What levels are you talking about?
Level three.
What about the T?
G four.
Oh, the proposal.
It's the proposal, level three. And I'm just saying, what do we start working on? And when some of the immediate needs are things like the windows. When if sixty percent of the, of the building is gonna come down, do you start working on the windows?
No.
Right.
Right, you don't start working on that. If you start working on the walls, and then the walls are all gonna be changed and torn down. And electrical, do you start working on that? No, you don't work on that.
Well, I, I'm, I'm wondering about that, because not a hundred percent of the building's gonna get torn down. So that means there will be new construction, presumably including up-to-date windows. And maybe the windows that get fixed sooner are the ones that aren't gonna be destroyed. Because the whole thing is gonna be destroyed.
Right, and a lot of this was to preserve the architectural integrity.
Well, I'm saying there might be some parts that we could say, you know, the, the new construction, if it's funded, uh, won't affect these. So we'll fix those now. And part of the new construction cost would be up-to-date windows, for example.
So, but I'm just saying, like, would, would, would you, because if, if you're gonna replace, if you're in a new renovation on your house, are you going to replace? And you don't know if you're gonna have funding in the future to do that expansion, are you only gonna do the front couple of windows? That's would be my concern, is that we don't, we don't have approval in place and know that you're going to get funding in the, in the future. Are you just gonna do?
Something you do anyway.
A couple? And that's what I'm saying, like, I think it has to be like things that are like ceiling tiles and acoustic, and it has to be something very specific. But then we go back into, okay, we just do the main area of the library, right? You just do the main area of the library and you carpet the main floor of the library. There's, but there's, there's a couple small projects, but I'm saying a lot of the light systems and building systems, which are going to. On a calendar to basically exceed their, their term.
Right.
It's not wise, in my opinion, to start replacing those if a lot of building is going to be changed. You know, if you're gonna change the air conditioning handling, you're going to need to change that second floor of the terrace. So doing any work on that, that second floor of the terrace is going to need a lot of extra time. So we would stay off of that. Windows, we would stay off of it, because we don't know.
What you just said might end up being a nudge.
Right.
Or doing more.
Or that we don't.
Say, we really need all the windows done. And it's gonna save money in the long run, because there'll be better insulation and everything, right? And if the city says, yeah, that's a good idea to do, then you say, well, if you're gonna do that. You know, you should rebuild the wall that contains that window at the same time. I mean, just sort of.
It's gonna be torn down, right? If, if that building's, if that part of the building is torn down, that's what I'm just saying. It's like, if that piece of the window, if you're looking at that level of level three, that does that level of renovation and demolition. Don't spend the money changing out the windows right now. That's just my point on there, it's like, that's.
So what you're saying is we should find things that could be done and.
And, and wouldn't have to be.
And would be untouched if there were, uh, an, an increase in the renovation.
Right.
I don't think we would have much trouble finding things like that.
So, so are you saying that level two or, or level one would, would be a bad problem?
Well, I'm saying like on this one, which is that, if you look, if you look back at, back at page forty-three again, which says. Um, there's a bill. Um, right, we have twenty-three thousand.
Okay, is that look like, because I have a different version. Okay, it looks like it, sure.
If you look at, I'll keep right at the top, and we're twenty-three thousand square feet, and so.
Wow.
And no, and that, that demolition in, in level one.
Right, and so then level three, you're demolishing fifteen thousand square feet out of twenty-three thousand square feet. What I'm saying is you're, you're demolishing it quite a bit.
Right.
Right, and so doing work on the entirety, so if you start working on HVAC, if you start working on plumbing or electrical on that building. It's very difficult to start on that kind of project right now, thinking that fifteen thousand square feet, if you just spend all this money on. It's gonna, it's gonna be demolished.
Right, right, and we, and we wouldn't want to do that, but we also need that to work as a way to light a fire under. We don't have time to wait, because some of these things are emergencies. And if we don't get the money to do renovations within a couple of years, we're being very irresponsible about. The care of the building. And then, we don't, we don't have time, we already waited five years, and now some of these things that we're talking about needing to do, we. We either need to back off on our renovation or get really serious and, and in a hurry about it. We're gonna have the luxury of time.
Right, but, but that's where I'm saying with like, if we don't have a bond, what's the next, next answer? If we don't put out a level one, if we don't have something else there, we're just putting all of our, all of our eggs in one basket. So this is what's, this is what the plan is, right? This is what the plan is, we don't have.
And we don't have a Plan B.
We don't have a Plan B. And I see, what we did before is we said Plan Three, Plan Two, and Plan One, and not Plan Four.
Right.
And so my recommendation is we do Plan Three, Plan One, then Plan Two. So the backup is Plan One, because I still see this as, as a needed. But essentially that if there is no identified, if, if there's not community interest on the bond, if there's not city interest in a bond.
Just can't do it.
We just can't do it. And we still have these needs that are gonna come up in five years, in ten years. And that's, that's essentially what I'm saying, is that we, we have to come up with a. This is still.
Admissible.
Well, this, this is here, but at that same time, we know that we're gonna need to update the restrooms. And the ADA work is going to have to continue to be worked on here, this building.
Oh, it's just incumbent on us to make really, really clear that one, given what you just said, is only a backup. And the three is the vision, that's our desired future as defined. But, um, uh, and even if we have to revert to one, for some reason. We would still have three as our vision, meaning the ultimately desired one. And that, uh, it's not a replacement, it's a, you know, temporary step in the direction.
Right, so, so does one incorporate all the problems? I mean, if we just said today, we will do one, and there was money, we did one. Then all the effects is new electrical, the roof, the painting, everything is in one.
Right. Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, I think one is still attainable on there, but I, I'm just saying to put the, the numbers in order, which is it goes three, two, one.
Right.
So you think that's more realistic, and do you think it's acceptable?
To them? I, I think it's, I think it's in terms of the, you know, working with a, um. Number one, I, I think it's acceptable in terms of people's expectation of wanting this building here. Two, people still want this, you know, one, as we've said, as trustee Betty has said, too, also just about the conversations that people wanted the building in the site here.
Um, the stuff listed under number one would be included in one shape or form in number three. So that one could be like a subset of three. And if we didn't get what we needed to move forward with three, we said, well, let's just do one. We're in effect, in effect, anyway, doing part of three by doing one.
But then you have to rip out, all you have to rip out, all the stuff you just put in, because we're, there's demolition of most of the, of like.
So if.
Three was quite different, it wasn't.
So, so if we don't get funding for three, but somehow we do get funding for one, basically we're saying we're settling for one. And we will not expect three to be ever happen. On the way, yeah.
Well, that's, that's why I think that the idea of doing it as a kind thing and saying, we still want to keep three on the table.
Well, and I think if we say three, and everything in one is also part of three, like Diane's been saying correctly over and over again, it's gonna take years. And, you know, you're not gonna do all of three, even if you got the money, in one calendar year. So we, they just do the stuff that sort of feels like number one first, and, but they keep going.
But if you knew you were gonna be done at one, we would do the ones, because there are, there are, there are a lot of things on that list, you'd go ahead and.
But our vision would be that we wouldn't stop at one if we didn't have to.
Exactly, right.
And I, I think there's a piece about there, I mean, by the time this goes in, there's probably gonna be different. Um, architecture plans and different, you know, different descriptions on there, what to do on the outside, and what to do on there. Um, like what to expand on and everything like that. And I'm still to say, like, the, even on here, which one goes to level one, one of the reasons is costs. There's a couple pieces on there, it's on page thirty. Since facility improvements would be considered a renewal of existing finishes and systems. And since this whole building code combines would likely not be triggered. And the other part, um, this makeover option reflects a relatively low cost approach to facility renovations. They were not bringing up the library standards of new construction, makeover would likely have the shortest useful life, life of any of the options. What I, the reason I want to mention that too, is because that's where I mean like, if the level two or level three can rapidly rise the cost, because they are, are renovating up. To full updated code and everything, that's gonna be quite a bit. Um, and enclosures and other things like that, I think is, in my mind, that's, that's where I'm thinking about, like, that, then enclosure, that other piece. Is, in my mind, the next step. That, that, you know, the.
This out here?
What's that?
The D S, yeah. So, I hate to throw out all of this nice work and everything, but is it a reasonable counter to go back to G four or somebody? And say, we need something that does happen in phases, and if we never got to phase two or three, we'd be okay?
Oh, we can say we want to shoot for three, and let's lay it out in phases. And we know that early phases of that would be in effect the same as one.
Right, that's not what we have here. That's what Brian was saying, is there's a, is, if you're going, yeah, if you're going for three, you're not going to move forward on phase one things at all. And then you're gonna be waiting three years before you even do anything. And that's what I'm saying, is maybe, maybe you need more realistic about ever getting there. Um, we need a level. Two point two.
It's nice to have something sort of, um, just in case. But, um, what if, especially if we're joined at the hip of police and fire? You know, the bond issue or whatever really comes through sufficiently.
Right, and then we go for three.
By the way, whatever that would happen, I mean, that would be, because this is not a fully implemented plan, right? This is, this is a very rough kind of an estimate of what their process is.
Right. So, and that would be the next step, is to get more concrete about a time, construction timeline, and what, what things would happen in that order.
Right, and that's where you have like a lot of those other pieces in terms of working with other libraries, how long they take.
And then how much you have to have the building.
Yeah, where you're looking at level three, uh, design permits on that thing, allocated eight point four million dollars, right? And, um. Yeah, familiar with a couple other libraries that have used, used, uh, adjacent spaces for, for periods of time, you know? And it does, does take some time for architecture going up for bid, and all of that.
Right, so even if we were sitting here with the money right now, even then, we're looking at here.
Right, oh, yeah.
We have a, we have a bird's eye view on the plan.
Okay.
Bird's eye view of, of going forward.
And we, we, I think we shared a lot of good ideas and discussion and, uh, evaluation. And, but I don't think we're done, and that's why I didn't think yet we're going to have anything to vote on. I think it's, except I will vote for whoever's in charge of the clocks. It's twelve minutes to six.
Yeah. Yeah, when she said we have a half hour and it was twenty-two, yeah.
That wasn't the clock, I put it up, so my, my broke.
New clocks.
Well, still grab it by the big, the big hand anymore.
Yeah.
Okay?
So, so I guess we have the choice, do we, um, write it up and bring it back next month for a vote? Or can we agree in principle that this is what we want to talk to the city about?
I think both.
I think it's we're in, uh, but, you know. So I suppose we can't really vote on that until get an actual date, right?
And I'll say, and, and Chair Silveira, as you're out next meeting, right? So I think, um, Vice Chair Delormeade is here, so I think the week. There, I, I mean, you know, if we still wanted to discuss, or what's the next step, or if you wanted to bring it back for other. Bring for a proposal to vote on, what, what was there? What's the action that we're looking at?
I guess, do we need any additional information?
Do. And that's where I was saying that, you know, just listening to council figuring out what's on the public safety and the agendas and everything going on there. I'm not sure what's happening on those, you know, there's, but. and the agendas and everything going on there, I'm not sure what's happening on those, you know, there's, but.
We don't want to miss. We don't want to miss a chance. We don't want to keep a high, that's right.
Right, but we're not going to be ahead of council's presentation because I'm saying there's, there's a presentation that they walk through of council at public safety next week, on Tuesday. That's part of their agenda already, on Tuesdays they're walking through it on the agenda. And that'll be a discussion of that episode.
And we couldn't get them from agenda until. Well, we can't, we've got to meet with Hans first, I mean, that's, that's it. So it's practical, we would be meeting with Hans sometime in the next month and hope to get on the city council agenda in.
Okay.
What's happening with the budget that we?
Well, I think, let me see, I'll, I'll text that, there's somebody needs to use our YouTube.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll talk about the budget, everything in my.
Okay, do we have any, plus the comments? Do we have library director comments?
Yeah, just a couple things, the masterpiece schedule is on Tuesday. One of the items that I have proposed is the elimination of lake lines. And then we'll bring that back to the board. That's on the masterpiece schedule on Tuesday for PM session. The assistant library director recruitment, I should have a, more announcements coming very soon. And then on the budget, the city budget, we had a, my meeting was postponed because there's some software technical glitches. So April seventh is my meeting with the city manager and finance, they are regarding the budget request for this fiscal year.
And those, and those capital improvements will be added to the budget or is that a separate?
That's typically a separate project, April probably spoken in the public.
Capital improvement to you. I'm sorry, Brian, what, what day are you meeting?
April seventh.
Seven. So Tuesday's meeting, do you need any support or any, any library funds from us? Do you present?
I will be there just to answer if there's any questions. But if anybody wants to follow through in terms of, you know, I mentioned that bringing in support to the board and we talked about this, it's on the agenda.
Okay, so it's already.
It's there in the notes, but if anybody, if there was any public comments, you're welcome to attend or make public comments if you might.
Yeah, that's pretty much how, how would I need to come and say?
I don't know if it'll be, I don't know if it'll be pulled out and discussed or.
And say, we already own the library in charge of seeing them.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the reason why people just continue them. Right, so all that, or is that, is that on?
It's basically very frequently there, we're, you know, and we're working with other people. We're going to move forward.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just add in the minutes from our meeting last month, just a month ago, in which it says, recommendations of the group, and I assume that's the group that, that's Pons and Matt. And it says, the board should discuss articulating vision of library facilities going forward, incorporating discussions G four and what we can reasonably expect given today's funding climate, increased expenses. This should then be presented to city council and shared with city manager's office. So I'm not so sure that we have to jump through a hoop city manager before we can present it to council, given what I just read here.
I don't think that that order, oh, yeah. I mean, I think that if I'm understanding, the city manager is going to put city council agenda.
We knew it, I think with, with Matt, we did it on Tuesdays. We discussed. All right, let's jump off if we can, so we can.
Shall we, move to jury? No, you all.
Thank you guys.